Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the January 3 Cumberland County Board of Commissioners meeting. Welcome and happy, happy, happy New Year to absolutely every one of you, and we are looking forward to an exciting and productive New Year. And at this time, I will call on Commissioner Dr. Jeanette Council for the invocation. Heaven and Father, we are privileged to start our meeting in a New Year. We wish for health and happiness and goodwill for all of our citizens as we pray to make the best decisions for them in this county. Please guide us, help us, and keep us. Without you, nothing will be accomplished. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move on to the approval of agenda. Madam Manager, are there any changes on the agenda?
Yes, please. We need to add a closed session to discuss property acquisition to the agenda. And that is the only change. Closed session to discuss property acquisition.
Okay, if I can get a motion without addition?
Second.
It's been motioned properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We will move on to presentations. Madam Manager, if you would introduce the item and the presenter.
Emergency Services Director Jean Booth will give a brief update on the transition to the new 911 call center, which occurred on December 14. In addition, Mr. Booth will present a brief presentation on winter weather preparedness.
Good morning, Mr. Booth.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chairwoman Stewart, happy New Year as well.
Happy New Year.
I have two items, of course, as Madam Manager mentioned, on the move to the new 911 emergency service center and some great topics of winter weather. All right. So, the transition to the new emergency service center was very smooth. Administrative staff started moving into the building with assistance from internal services and integrated or innovative technology services December 5. This allowed for the team to organize and support the overall move of the 911 center from the old location to the new. That occurred on December 14. The new 911 center was staffed with administrative support team and off-shift telecommunications while, on that day, while the existing 911 center, previous 911 center, was staffed with the regularly scheduled shift. Cut over started approximately 10:00 a.m. with a series of validations to the system. We received the first 911 call at approximately 10:40 a.m. on the 14th. The total cut over and testing of 911 phones and radio traffic took approximately two and a half hours, and the scheduled on-duty shift was able to transition to the 911 center at around 12:30 that day. We had many vital partners on hand for the 911 cut over, supporting all facets of the center, from radio, CAD, AT&amp;T with their 911 system, Carolina Recording with our recording of radios and telephone traffic. It was a very crowded occasion, but a very successful event. With all those there, if something were to have gone amiss, we were definitely there and had the tools in our toolbox to handle those problems. Fortunately, there was no major issues, very small, minor items that were able to be fixed and addressed almost immediately. Since the December 14 move-in, the emergency service team has continued to make this new home, make this a new home and settle in. We continue to find new ways to capitalize on the new building and continue to increase morale. As you know, our previous digs were a little dark, and we're finding ways to make this even more a home. And as emergency services, we thank you for the opportunity to do that as well. So, that's the update on the transition for that day. If you have any questions, I can answer those now, or we'll move on to the winter weather.
Commissioner Keith.
Thank you. Well, congratulations on being there. It has taken a lot of time. A number of the Commissioners here first saw the 911 center during Hurricane Matthew, and I think it showed the need for it. 911 center is only as good as the people that are there. What is the staffing, what does the staffing look like for telecommunications at the 911 center?
Comparative to our peers, we're in pretty good shape. We're over.
To the service they have to provide to the citizens, not necessarily. Do we have telecommunications? Do we have enough telecommunications?
Yes.
Are we fully staffed?
No, no. We're short five positions.
Out of how many?
Out of 40 on-shift positions.
Okay.
We're continuing to strive. We've been in worse situations. We've had shorter staffing or worse staffing issues. We're striving to get those five hired on and started in training.
Okay. And my second question is, the previous 911 center, what is going to be its purpose?
My hopes for that, or our hopes for that, is to be a backup 911 center.
And have we started the process to be able to shift over into that, and is the sheriff understands?
I'm continuing to talk with the sheriff on that. I think that still has some additional discussions to have.
So, we don't really know if we have a backup 911 center yet?
Not 100%. We're still discussing that, but that is our hopes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Booth.
Thank you. I'll move on to the winter weather.
Oh, okay.
Update. What I'm about to say, you may not believe it from the weather that we had during the holiday season, but in October, the Comet Prediction Center from National Weather Service again said that the U.S. is in its third year of La Niña. This alludes to a milder winter. So, you wouldn't think so a couple of weeks ago, but if you look at today's weather and what's forecast in the next two to three weeks, we're looking at higher than normal or higher than normal temperatures. We know by the temperatures from Christmas, it's still a possibility for impactful events to happen. So, we urge our citizens to always be prepared, our county employees to always be prepared and vigil and watchful of the weather for these events to occur. We urge folks to make a plan for you and your family and pets. That includes having meds, medications, money, water, non-perishable foods. Also, be prepared for secondary, safe secondary heat if you can. If you do use fossil fuels for secondary heat, we definitely urge you for a CO monitor in your home. And, you know, we treat winter weather as all hazards event. You kind of, you prepare. We urge folks to prepare the same way, whether it's a hurricane, or tornado, or a winter weather event. So, continue through those same lines, but also in winter weather, have multiple layers of clothes available. During the holidays, we worked with the Salvation Army, Manor Dream Center, True Vine Ministries, Parks and Rec, to ensure, you know, that, to discuss that there was ample white flag accommodations. I think there was some small hiccups. Salvation Army had a water leak that caused them to block off a couple of their rooms, but they were still able to maintain their bed count, from my understanding. We worked with Parks and Recs during the holiday season when a lot of our normal warming center locations were closed because of the holidays. Parks and Rec was open most every day, 10 to 4, except for Christmas Day. And we had one other impactful event, a hotel, Carolina Motor Lodge on Highway 301, had a lot of electrical fire in their electrical room. It didn't impact any of the building other than the electrical room. They're currently out of power. We worked with the Red Cross to find a place for the displaced residents there. They're not typical night to night. Those, the folks at the Carolina Motor Lodge, and such as some of those other hotels along that way, rent month to month, and that's really their permanent residence. Due to the challenges of trying to open a shelter during the holidays, we teamed up with the American Red Cross. We placed these residents in a hotel for a couple of nights, and Red Cross provided meals for those until they were able to find, give them time to find other accommodations. So, that's all I have for my weather presentation. If you have any questions.
Any questions, anyone?
I guess my question goes to PIO as much as anything else, because I think that what you told us in terms of preparation is good. Will we send that out in terms of when it gets to be cold or beforehand on several occasions as to what they would need to be able to prepare for that?
Yes, we have already been in coordination with emergency management to share that information, and we'll continue to do so throughout, especially as we foresee extreme weather forecast.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, we'll now introduce the next presenter and item.
With fewer than eight years remaining in the An Street landfill, the county is considering options for future solid waste disposal. These options require the preparation of an environmental justice report, which was presented to the board at the December 8 agenda session. The report identified the area surrounding An Street landfill as a underserved community that requires enhanced engagement in the public participation plan. This morning, General Manager for Environmental Services Amanda Botter went in to introduce this item, and also the consultants with HDR, a nationally recognized firm that developed the public participation plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just to add briefly to what Madam Manager stated, the draft report was submitted to DEQ last week. It was submitted last Friday. And the public participation plan is included in your agenda packet for your review. I am pleased to present today Sabrina Cologne with HDR. She prepared the environmental justice report, and she has prepared the public participation plan, and she's just going to give you a brief overview of the public participation plan. And we are all available, Jeff Murray with HDR is here, our technical consultant, Sabrina, and myself, to answer questions after this brief overview. So, with that, Sabrina.
All right. Hello, how are you all?
Good morning.
So, it is actually really exciting to be at this stage, because it means that we're really ready to begin more of that, the actual public engagement tied to the environmental justice process. And so, just as a kind of quick overview, the environmental justice process is the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people really impacted by the project. Really, what this comes down to is making sure that anyone that is going to, in surrounding communities that would be impacted, has an opportunity to voice any concerns they may have, to be able to ask any questions, and really be a part of that process as decisions are being made. And so, they're being made with the community and not without them. And so, as Amanda said, we did submit the environmental justice report last week. That is an initial report. That report really did look at all of the communities, making sure we understood what are the demographics of the communities, where are places where we might need to have increased engagement. It's a draft report, because what we'll do now is we'll use that to go ahead and do all of our engagement. That engagement will then go into a final report that would also include potential mitigation strategies that we would have at the facility as well. And so, in your packets, we do have the public involvement plan that we are planning to execute beginning this month. And so, just to talk a little bit about the goals that we have set, so really, the goals of that plan is, one, to communicate with all of the project stakeholders and the public, to educate them on the landfill, why we need to do the expansion, what the options are, and what those potential impacts would be. We want to engage with them to make sure that we're hearing. It's a two-way conversation, so that we're able to actually understand what potential concerns they have, so that we can address those community concerns to the extent that's practicable. And then, we're also going to discuss the fair and achievable mitigation strategies that would reduce any potential impacts. And so, that, again, that's that two-way conversation, having a really good understanding of what could be the possible concerns they would have, but also some opportunities that the county could take in order to just be a better neighbor within the community. So, with the communications plan, there are kind of three components to that. It's the meetings and events, that ongoing stakeholder communication, as well as our communications tools and tactics. So, the meetings and events, we're looking at doing some public meetings, both online and in person. We want to give people options to be able to participate in any way that they, it's going to be the most convenient for them. That, again, is about getting that conversation started. Then, we're also going to do a plan of stakeholder communication. The stakeholder communication, and you'll see in your packet as well, is a non-exhaustive list of community organizations that we want to partner with. So, we're looking at the neighborhood churches. We're looking at community-based organizations. We're looking at advocacy groups. Any other groups that can help us really, one, expand the reach of the information that we have, but also help us come up with those practical solutions that we might have for mitigation. And then, the communications tools and tactics, you know, our engagement is really heavily focused in on the one-mile radius around the facility, because those are the communities that are most impacted. However, we want to make sure that we're providing enough information to all of the county customers as well. And so, we're going to be utilizing several tools and tactics from social media, to the website, to channel, just to make sure that we're getting that information out as the county makes decisions, and as they're available, and any mitigation strategies that are selected. And just kind of a brief overview of the schedule for the next few months, we are planning to launch several of those communications tools this month, and begin that targeted neighborhood and business owner outreach. That's going to be those one-on-one conversations with advocacy groups. That's going to be going to the neighborhood churches, asking them questions about how best to reach the community. There's going to be a lot of that personal touch there. And then, when we go into February, we're looking at having some larger open house meetings that would be for a larger group, bringing, have both that in-person as well as online engagement, and to allow all the residents to be able to come and provide their feedback. We also want to have a speakers bureau at this time, so if there's other groups that would like to invite the county to come and speak about the project, we'll have those tools ready and available, so they can kind of go on a road show, to be able to share that information. And then, we'll come back and do additional official outreach to provide consistent updates on what we're hearing from the community. And then, by March, we should have some time to incorporate that feedback into those mitigation strategies. And that's to say, March is not the end of the engagement. That's just when we feel that we'll have, start to have a good amount of conversation going, that we can start to update the plan, start to update the design, so that if there's things that the county could be doing, that just, again, to continue to be a good neighbor within the community, we can incorporate those before some key decisions are made. And then, we'll have just ongoing communications throughout the process as well. And with that, I'll turn if you guys have any questions. Are there any questions? Commissioner Keith.
Thank you. I appreciate this. This is always a big concern. You talked, how long do you think all of this communication, I'm looking at the stakeholder list, and it's pretty exhaustive. How long will all this go on for?
So, the plan that you have in front of you, that's planning to take place at least over the next five months or so. We probably will have an additional communications plan as decisions are made, so we can communicate out to the community what we've heard and what we're doing about it. And so, that would, I think, the communications plan, as long as we're within the project, will continue to update and move forward. But this initial outreach that we're planning to do is really within these first three months, and then into the summer, I'd say, two additional months, to be able to really incorporate that into the mitigation strategies.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is, there is a sense of urgency for us on this landfill. And, again, the list is exhaustive. I counted 28 churches that are in there. And five months seems to be a bit aggressive to be able to have meetings at all of the, that doesn't include. But I am a little concerned that we're telling only one side of the story, that the need of this facility is, there doesn't seem to be very many advocacy groups on what it could do to our community if we don't have this facility extended. I mean, it's pretty significant if we don't.
And I think that's a good, part of this is really an education. So, one, we do want to hear from the community, understand their concerns, but I think there's a lot of education that we have to do upfront, which is why I believe in this first month, we want to start having those kind of one-on-one conversations, when we've listed some of those advocacy groups. So, one, you know, part of it is to hear from them, to understand where their main concerns, so we can update all of our communications, update our key messages to answer their questions, but then also use that as an opportunity to ask the right questions of the community. And so, I would say, I think that that is an ongoing education, and I don't think that's going to stop in this three months. I think we're going to have to continuously educate the community, even past that, about the project, why we're doing it, and what the impact truly is for the county.
Okay. And if I could follow up, Madam Chair. A lot of these have to do, we know that when you have these facilities, a lot of times, there's renters in these areas. They're not necessarily the homeowners. The potential mitigation you've mentioned, I'm sure that there is a wide range of potential mitigation. And it would seem to me that the outcome could be subjective, yeah, in a way. Someone who believes that their lives or their property is affected in one way, the other person may not. We run through this all the time with water and sewer and other things. So, how do you, how do you take a subjective matter and take a broad brush and put it in the community to say, okay, potential mitigation may mean compensation, but, or it may even mean buying, purchasing, right? Is that possible?
I think for the, where we are with the facility now, because we're looking at the transfer station, and it's all going to be on existing county property.
Right.
So, at this stage, all of the, all of the strides that we're taking for the long-term operations are really focused within the existing property.
Yes.
And so, I don't want to speak for the community until we've had a chance to hear from them, but I believe what we're probably going to see is going to be more of operational impacts. So, the county could just say, you know, if the concern is traffic, as an example, you know, are we changing?
Or noise or smell or that.
Things of that nature.
Okay.
Things of that nature.
It's not necessarily health-related.
And we have done, part of the environmental justice report is looking at potential health impacts, and if there needs to be mitigation. I think just in terms of what the county's already planning with looking into wing-up-the-bail fill and relining that, we're already taking measures that is going to make it a healthier, healthier facility. And so, as of right now, I think the main concerns, or what I believe will probably be the main concerns of the community, is going to be around the increased activity at the facility as they look at the transfer station.
Okay.
But, again, we'll see what they bring to us.
Commissioner Adams.
And I want to thank you, because I pushed, because we ought to know the history of this, and the environmental racism that has occurred in this country over the years is just astronomical. It's always been put, these type of operations in low-income and people of color. And I think it's important that it's put there, and then you talk to them afterwards. So, to be able to do this ahead of time, to give them that input and that, be able to do that is extraordinary. I want to just congratulate this Board of Commissioners for taking that action, to engage you all in terms of doing this. Probably got to do it by federal regulation, too. But, for us to be able to do that, I think, is a step in the right direction. Many communities aren't doing this. I think we owe it to all of our citizens, businesses, everybody in this community, and I do agree with you, that it's also to tell the story of the need of this, because we're going to do that. And I think that's more of a county issue than this, but I believe that as we do this, if we all believe in the cause, which is to make sure that all of our citizens are equally cared for, that we'll be in the right direction. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you. And I would add, you know, there are federal and state regulations in terms of doing the report, but I will say that the extent of this public participation plan is beyond, I think, that minimum requirement. And so, I do think the county is taking that extra step to ensure that it's not just the checking the box. We are making sure that the community will be a part of that process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner? It's been motioned and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
We will now move on to our items of business. Madam Manager.
In collaboration with Solid Waste, Emergency Services has submitted an application to the North Carolina Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Section for the fiscal year '22 BRIC grant. The grant aims to develop a 20-year comprehensive vegetative waste management plan and to evaluate the current operation of the Wilkes Road facility. Emergency Services Director Jean Booth will present this item.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Also with me, I have Gary Crumpler, our Emergency Management Program Coordinator, and Amanda Botter's here as well, for any questions that they make, and you may have that they can assist with. This is a 20-year comprehensive vegetative waste management plan to evaluate the current operation of the Wilkes Road facility. Additionally, the project will address how to increase production and optimize an already limited capacity during disaster events, which is critical to the recovery process. Vegetative is one of our biggest volume of disaster debris that we see in the county. The estimated cost of the project is $150,000. We're seeking a federal share of $112,500, which is 75%. In addition to that $112,500, the federal government will also provide $7,500 in management cost. That's 5% of the total cost of the project, and it's paid 100% by FEMA, as I said. The management cost does not increase the local cost share amount. In addition, the BRIC requires sub-applicant to provide a matching, consisting in-kind services by county staff or county funds of 25%, which is to $37,500. County staff recommends that the county, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, commit funds in the amount of $37,500, which is 25% of the project cost, through in-kind services or county funds, or a combination for the fiscal year '22 BRIC grant, by signing the attached letter in the agenda that's issued to the State Hazard Mitigation Office. This funding will be used upon notification that the grant has been received. If you have any questions?
Any questions? Commissioner Adams.
Madam Chair, I would rec, I would move that the Board of Commissioners commit funds in the amount of $37,500, 25% of the project cost, through in-kind services, county funds or a combination to the FY '22 BRIC grant, by signing the attached letter, which was in our packet, to the State Hazard Mitigation Office. The funding will be used upon notification that the grant has been received.
Is there a second?
What did you say?
It's been motioned and properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
I can repeat that. I'll repeat that.
Thank you. Madam Manager.
The 2023 NACO conference is scheduled for February 11 through the 14. The agenda session is currently scheduled for February 9, and some Commissioners may be traveling that day. So, the Clerk to the Board, Andrea Tebby, is requesting to change the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners' agenda session from Thursday, February 9, to Tuesday, February 7. Any questions? Commissioner Keith?
Yeah, I got some questions. We were picking the 7, and I don't know if we thought about this, but we have a meeting on the 6, and it really doesn't give us any opportunity. I personally, I'm not going to be there here that week, anyway. But, the idea behind the second Thursday of the month was so we had time to take information from our first meeting, so we can look at it and then have enough time to go to the second meeting. Why are we not looking at the next Thursday, instead of trying to cram it all in with a meeting, and then the next day having a 1 o'clock meeting?
Andrea, do you know of a reason why we can't move it to the next Thursday?
It's the Board's decision. I'm just, the wisdom of having a meeting at night, or in the morning, and then having another meeting the next day, just... and then having another meeting the next day just doesn't seem beneficial to the body.
I guess the issue...
She can answer. I mean, go ahead.
I was just requested to put the item in. I could work with your schedule and your convenience.
You were requested to put the item in for the 7th?
Yes.
Okay, so there was a discussion before this.
Oh, I don't know about that, but...
Well...
The problem with the 16th is trying to do the Agenda for the 20th meeting, because what comes out of the Agenda Session will go on the Agenda for the 20th. And, I mean, that puts you, puts everybody, you're talking about one day to try to get all of the materials from the 16th on to the 20th. That's the, that's the, that's the problem.
Yeah, typically, there, more items are moved from the Agenda Session to the night meeting than from the day session to Agenda Session.
We've done it before, but...
What is the Board's pleasure? What day, if that does not, if it's inconvenient, or if it's...
Well, I would make a motion to move it to that Tuesday, February the 7th meeting.
I'll second the motion, and I would just add, I agree with what Commissioner Keith is saying. I was looking at all of that second week, too, and the 14th doesn't work, because the conference is still on, and the 16th jams you up too close to the 20th to get the Agenda done. So, the 7th is the only thing that really, really makes any sense in there.
It's been motioned and properly second. All those in favor?
Those in favor, Commissioner Faircloth, Commissioner Counsel, Chair Womack Stewart, Vice Chairman Adams, and Commissioner Booth.
All those opposed?
Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Keith.
Thank you. The meeting will be on Thursday. Madam Manager, we'll move on to Item C.
Action Pathways is a nonprofit, a community action agency. They're applying for a Community Services Block grant funded through NC Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $1,043,929 in federal funds. There is no county match required. The application requires that the Board of Commissioners review and have an opportunity to comment on the application prior to its submittal. The motion, though, is to ask the Board to approve their submittal for the grant and signing the application. If there are any questions, Heather Skeens, Assistant County Manager, can provide additional information.
Commissioner Adams.
I will, just for the record, to put on the record that I am the liaison from the Board of Commissioners to Action Pathways and sit as their chair. There is no conflict. I don't get anything out of it. But in terms of that, just to put it on the record that that is, and it was, talked about at the Action Pathways to bring it to the Board.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move that we vote for the approval of Action Pathways to submit the application for the CSBG funds by signing the application, funding certification, and assurances.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Vice Chairman Adams for nominations.
Madam Chair, nominations to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, there are three vacancies. We recommend the nomination of, an appointment of Sandra Renee Lafferty, which is a member of the faith community, Louis Leek, who is substance abuse representative, and Jalen Velasquez, person under the age of 21. I can get a second.
Second. It's been moving properly second. All those in favor?
They have, I would say that JCPC, in order to have a quorum, needs to have these done as a nomination and an appointment. For them to be able to carry through with their, they didn't have a couple of meetings in the end of the year, so they need this to be able to carry on with a quorum.
Okay, this is a nomination and appointment.
Yes.
And that's what I seconded.
All right.
Who made the motion? Me?
I did, yeah, you did.
All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Faircloth, Commissioner Counsel, Chair Womack Stewart, and Vice Chairman Adams.
All those opposed?
Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Keith.
On principle, not on personnel.
Yeah, we have policies, procedures, but we throw those things around.
Do whatever you want.
Yeah, whatever. You know, we talk about giving everybody a chance, and then we put people on the board for six times in a row.
Joint Fort Bragg and Cumberland County Food Policy Council, there are three vacancies, recommend nominations of Robert Elliott, Representative from Local Farming, Alexis McLean, Representative from Local Farming, and Clifton Johnson, Representative who does not work in local government or health agencies. Those are nominations.
Nominations and appointments, or just nominations?
Just nominations. Okay. You don't have to say it. It's just nominations.
I'll move the nominations be closed.
Second.
Well, we don't even, we just nominate and come back for the appointments at the next meeting.
Okay. We will move now into our closed session.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed session for personnel matter pursuant to NCGS 14331811A6, and a closed session for property, which is GS... 14331811A, probably 6, 7, or 8.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been motioned and properly second. We go into closed session. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
I move to come back out of closed session.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we come out of closed session. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been motioned and properly adjourned that we are adjourned. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay.